Yeah, we're gonna go ahead and start and we have our engineer Charles Ortiz, in-house engineer and our associate engineer, our barber is Richard Coleman. Go ahead, Richard.
All right, thank y'all for coming. I've got a stack of cards here in case somebody doesn't have one. Y'all can hold on one more. We have a agenda set, we'll do a little five-minute introduction and then we've got the PowerPoint presentation outlining the projects. We've got a Q&amp;A session after that and then the closing stages in five minutes. We're planning on an hour and a half if we run under or over. A little by little but we should be fine. Has anybody not seen this presentation before? Okay, awesome. All right, so just to get started here, some quick facts.
Put that one over there.
And as far as, I mean, that mic is kind of a new speaker that we have here. If it's, I mean, can everybody hear just fine or should we be tucking in the mic? Okay.
Test.
Yeah, 'cause these aren't speakers, they're just, they're just audio.
All right, so just to recap, here's some bond election quick facts. Election date is November 7th from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The precincts and the locations and the addresses for each city. And just to recap, we're looking at the issuance of approximately $16.4 million worth of bonds for this set of projects. Some more election quick facts. Early voting actually starts today and here are the locations, the addresses and dates And here is the agenda. So we've got seven total projects and these projects are generated by the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan by Laguna Madre Water District or their CIP. These projects are refined unfunded capital improvements projects that have been in progress for a number of years now and these projects are supported by previous reports as done by a variety of engineers and other consultants. These projects are also supported by the state water plan. We're in Reg and M, but they're supported by the state water plan as recommended water management strategies. So in short, we have sludge drying beds at water treatment plant number two, which is project one. A new sludge holding tank at Port Isabel wastewater treatment plant, which is project number two. System-wide lift station rehabilitation, project number three. Eze Le Blanca wastewater treatment plant aeration basin hydraulic improvements is project number four. Andy Buoy wastewater treatment plant headworks improvements is project five. Andy Buoy wastewater treatment plant energy efficiency improvements is project six. And then Eze Le Blanca wastewater treatment plant headworks improvements is project number So again, bond projects overview. These are part of Laguna Madre Water District CIP. Projects are supported by previous reports and one thing to keep in mind is that the projects are driven by functionality, operations and maintenance and regulatory compliance. Projects are supported by Reg and M and this November bond election is the proposed funding source for these projects. A quick recap of some population growth rate estimates. So Texas Water Development Board publishes these growth rates on their website, so anybody can go onto their website and look at these. And what we found is the three main communities here in the service area by Laguna Madre Water District, both being SPI, Port Isabel and Laguna Vista, are expected to have a 1.37 average population growth rate over the next, what is that, 60 years? The 13.78 is a 10-year timeframe, so if you take that on a yearly basis, it's 1.37. From the same source, Texas Water Development Board, you can see that the county estimates for Cameron County are in line with the service area for Laguna Madre Water District. What's interesting to note is that Hidalgo County's growth rate is much greater at 1.72% as estimated by TWDB. One thing that's very interesting to note here for Laguna Madre Water District is it is a very unique service area that's impacted far and wide. So in line with the population projections that we just showed you, I just wanted to recap some data that had been accumulated this summer. This is showing local communities, the county and the Rio Grande Valley as a whole, previous populations and their percent growth. So you can see that if we averaged them all out, we're looking at 1.7 from 2000 to 2010 being SPI, Port Isabel, Cameron County and then the RGV as a whole. What's interesting about Laguna Madre service area again is that they serve South Padre Island and a recent study performed by Aaron Economic Consulting in 2014 indicated that South Padre Island was subject to 4.3 million visits per year, which equals an average daily population of approximately 11,780. So Laguna Madre is essentially servicing an area that is much larger in orders of magnitude than the population or census population data would suggest. So the first project, sludge drying beds at water treatment plant number two. This project was previously analyzed. Laguna Madre Water District paid for formal evaluation, analysis and cost evaluation determining what the best method for sludge processing and disposal would be. Their operation and maintenance drivers here, there's an existing sludge pond that was never designed to produce solids in a way that sludge drying beds would and the existing sludge pond is difficult to clean and maintain. Again, there are cost drivers as identified by the previous report suggesting that sludge drying beds would be the most cost-effective alternative. And there are solids loading and handling drivers. The existing solids handling system was not designed for the current plant configuration, namely the addition of a microfiltration membrane system that has a much different cleaning and backwash scheduled than a typical or conventional plant. And so what we're trying to do in this project is provide provisions for a complete system, analyze the well, determine whether it's adequately sized, it can handle wastes from the new treatment process and then of course provide provisions for a new pump station, piping, these sludge drying beds themselves, decant pump station and then piping back into the reservoir to recapture that water, the decant. Here's an aerial. The big dark area is the raw water lagoon, raw water reservoir rather. And then over there on the right, you see the existing sludge pond. You can kind of see some of the buildup or accumulation of solids in the middle. Here's a picture that was taken a couple weeks ago showing those solids. So in essence, they're sending solids-filled waste to this lagoon. Over time, it accumulates. The district tries to maintain it with a long-reach excavator and that's as far as they can reach from the banks of that sludge pond. And so as it sits and it currently operates, it does not produce any dried solids. The proposed system would look something like this. If you start up on the top left at the existing backwash pump station, we would convey waste flows over to the sludge drying beds, which are the yellow squares, rectangles rather. We would operate or alternate in operation where we would fill and then stop filling, begin drying and then alternate to the other bed. And then once we have dried solids, they could be easily removed with a piece of machinery like a Bobcat or a Baco. And all of the decant or the excess water would be conveyed southeastward or that'd be eastward, I'm sorry.
North.
Well, out of the beds rather. I guess in an easterly direction to the decant pump station and then we would pump it all the way around the existing sludge pond back into the reservoir to recapture that water more efficiently and then go through the treatment process all over again. All right, so project number two is a sludge holding tank at the Port Isabel wastewater treatment plant. This is another project that had been previously analyzed. Laguna Madre Water District has paid for an evaluation analysis and design of the sludge holding tanks at this facility. There are TCEQ compliance drivers here. So the district has made the move in order to improve the process to switch to fine bubble aeration equipment. And so in order to maintain compliance, the district needs to employ a sludge holding tank to meet that compliance. The absence of a sludge holding tank, once these improvements are already done at this facility, would be non-compliant. Their operation and maintenance drivers currently decanting without the sludge holding tank is a labor-intensive endeavor. A sludge holding tank would allow the operators to streamline the decanting operation and the absence of a sludge holding tank results in overloading of the existing drying beds. There are also solids loading and handling drivers. The current loading to the plant is about half of the rated capacity, which is 1.1 MGD. So one sludge holding tank will provide a five-day holding period at the current loading. So the plan is to eventually have two. Once the plant reaches its rated loading capacity, there will be a necessity for two. The plan is to have two, but the immediate plan that would be funded by this bond election is to employ only one sludge holding tank to provide the operational flexibility, to provide the redundancy as indicated at that last bullet point and then to be TCEQ compliant. This is a quick snapshot of some old drying beds that represent where the sludge holding tank would go. System-wide lift station rehabilitation, project number three. So a portion of this has already been identified by Laguna Madre staff. Over $700,000 of pump replacement needs have been identified as of March 2017. And again, when you're talking lift stations, the needs for improvements are ever-changing. Laguna Madre is constantly executing emergency repairs because of outages, breakages, et cetera. This project is supported by previous reports. The entire system was analyzed and the needs were identified in a 2012 wastewater model as performed by another firm. And recent efforts have included lift station evaluation and improvements recommendations. So again, we have previous reports saying that these lift stations need to be rehabilitated. The district has already identified a lot of the needs throughout the lift stations and then as part of our contract, we went and evaluated all of the lift stations and tabulated the needs from minor to extreme. There are also some reliability drivers here, obviously. Operators get called out at 3:00 in the morning on Sunday nights because a pump isn't working or a lift station is backed up. So the driver here is to enhance the collection system reliability. And then of course, with reliability comes a reduction in O&amp;M manpower. You don't have to be sending folks out on Sunday evenings at 3:00 in the morning, that's an improvement. And then as part of this suite of improvements, we're looking at a proposed SCADA system to enhance the O&amp;M efforts. Here's a couple pictures from a recently rehabilitated lift station. Now again, it bears repeating that this lift station was not rehabbed with odor control. This lift station was rehabbed for TCEQ compliance and it was rehabbed for reliability and operation The fourth project is Eze Le Blanca wastewater treatment plant aeration basin hydraulic improvements. Let me back up. So what has essentially been encountered here is a set of hydraulic bottlenecks and some short-circuiting. And so this project includes piping, channel modifications, gates in order to get more even flow throughput through those aeration basins where that maroon box is pointing to. Essentially, this was an old plant that had different basins for different purposes. Now they're all serving as aeration basins and the idea here is to make a more even flow split at the front of the plant, create better mixing with, with RAS and WASS and then of course on the effluent side to eliminate any short-circuiting that would happen through that aeration basin. And then this is also to, sorry, RAS and WASS, but this is also to eliminate overflows from Lift Station 19, is that correct, Charles?
Yeah, I mean, when the peak flow comes in, I mean, we need to, first, we've already cleaned out those basins as far as removing the sludge, but there's some wear structures or some improvements we need to do to help the hydraulics under peak flow conditions.
So during wet weather flows, you have Lift Station 19, which takes in INI in addition to its normal duty as a wastewater collection system, Lift Station. And those inflows, because they're much greater, sometimes result in overflows at the plant because of these hydraulic bottlenecks and the short-circuiting. So the idea is to alleviate that so that the plant is capable of receiving those higher demand flows from Lift Station 19. There's a picture of the facility. Project number five is Headworks improvements at Andy Buoy wastewater treatment plant. There is currently not a Headworks at this facility and the lack of Headworks results in additional operational effort. Maintenance of the plant without Headworks is time-intensive, labor-intensive and interrupt service. So essentially what we're talking about with a Headworks system are screens and grit removal. That's two processes. So in here, we're catching the large inert inorganic objects like mop heads and rags and things like that. And then over here, we're catching grit, which are the fine particles and organics that cannot be treated and eventually take up volume inside your basin such as sand and dirt, tiny pieces of metal, things like that. There's a picture of grit. And so what's essentially happening at these plants that are not equipped with grit removal is grit makes its way through the plant, or grit and large particles rather. They make their way through the plant and they get into a basin, they settle into a basin like the aeration basins we just talked about at Eze Le Blanca and they remain there because there's no way for them to get out until operators can shut the plant down and actually get in there and shovel and remove these particles by hand or through buckets or whatever. And so the idea here is to catch all of those inert untreatable particles up front of the Here's a table just showing the trade-off and the cost of grit removal. As part of Garber's contract, we performed a study this summer that actually categorized the grit at both facilities and we developed the actual proposed system needed to remove grit at this facility and then based that price that you see here that's being requested in this bond election. Andy Buoy energy improvements. So this is project number six. Blowers for aeration are the largest consumers of energy at a wastewater treatment plant. The blowers that are currently there are existing original equipment rather. Blower efficiency is degraded over time as any motor with bearings and windings and things like that. And replacing, replacing the blowers would result in electric bills that are a fraction of the current electricity bills. There's an aerial of the facility, north end of the island. And then here are the blowers. Existing blowers. So here's a quick breakdown of the anticipated impact of replacing the blowers. We took historical energy data on a yearly basis going back to 2014. We have taken the annual electricity bill for each of those years, prepared a three-year average and then based on what we've seen at Port Isabel wastewater treatment plant and then of course with other industry numbers, we're looking at a potential savings of about 46%. So if you took that 46% and applied it to the three-year average, you're looking at an estimated annual savings of about $58,000. You extend that over the life of a blower, which is anticipated to be 30 years, you're looking at about 1.75 million in total savings over the life of those blowers. So if you brought that back down, I'm having trouble reading this. If you brought that back down to present value, you're looking at 1.27 million dollars. So if you took the initial investment, which is assumed to be about 2.2 million and then applied the present value of 1.27 million, you're actually looking at a net present value of about $900,000. So 2.2 million dollar improvement value. If you brought all the savings back to the present value, you're essentially looking at spending $900,000 for that set of improvements in effect. Project number seven is Eze Le Blanca wastewater treatment plant headworks improvements. Just like Andy Buoy, there is not an existing Headworks system at this facility and this is kind of a recap of the Andy Buoy project obviously, but we're trying to catch all the large untreatable particles up front in addition to the grit at the front of the plant. And a study was performed this summer analyzing that grit to determine the proper system to address grit removal and we have applied that price in this, in this presentation and the bond request. So here's the summary. For project one, the new sludge drying beds and basin and backwash pump station at water treatment plant number two, we're looking at just over 1.5 million. For the sludge holding tank at PI wastewater treatment plant, just over 1.6 million. Lift station rehab is about 4.9 million. Aeration basin hydraulic improvements at Eze Le Blanca is about 986,000. Headworks at Andy Buoy is just over 2 million. Energy improvements at Andy Buoy is about 2.18 million. And then the Headworks at Eze Le Blanca are at about 2.5 million for a grand total of 15.78 million. And then you add in all the non-construction costs, which is legal, bond counsel, fees, et cetera, that brings us to the total of 16.43 million. Here is the tax rate summary. So on the left-hand column, you have property values and then in the pink, you have the open market funding source and in the blue, you've got Texas Water Development Board source. So just for example, if you have a property value of $100,000, if the Texas Water Development Board funding source is secured, which is our first focus in securing that funding source, your annual impact is $33.75 and your monthly impact is $2.81. And it goes on from there according to your property value. Couple quick notes, this does not affect the water rates for Laguna Madre Water District. The open market increase you can see there is just over three cents, just under four cents rather. Texas Water Development Board would be an increase of just over three cents. On the top right note, you can see what the current tax rate is. And then so you have scenarios for the tax rates under each source for open market as OM and TWDB being, so that's just over eight cents and then just under eight cents depending on which source is secured.
Right, and just to emphasize, these are estimates. I mean, once, the tax rate will take effect as the debt is actually issued, so, you know, it depends on the timing of the projects and so on and so forth.
Budget allocation. I think we had some questions a while back about how this would be allocated. So how we've set this up is rehabilitation and replacement and then new infrastructure. We think at this time that projects three and six fall under rehabilitation and replacement and then projects one, two, four, five and seven fall under new infrastructure. And you can see the breakdown there on the right-hand side. Forty-five percent of it is rehab and replacement approximately, $7 million, 7.1. And then 55% of that is new infrastructure, eight, just under 8.7 million for the total of 15.78. Sample service life for capital improvements. So for projects one, two, four, five, six and seven, we've got the expected life service, 20 to 30 years for each one of those and then the estimated costs for each one of Sample service life for lift station improvements. So what we've done here, these are all project three, but we've broken it down per lift station and have looked or categorized the description. So there are a variety of improvements for each lift station, right? No two lift stations are the same, but we've kind of grouped everything together to show that primarily it's recoding, pumping and valving, pumps, controls and electrical and then wells and decommissioning. So if we break it out into those four categories, we can see what the expected life or service life is and then what the average costs when applied to all lift stations. Some are greater or less than those average costs, but if you took all of them, that's One other thing we wanted to bring up regarding odor control at lift stations, obviously this is a very big deal. Wanted to state that the district is currently implementing odor mitigation at 30% of their existing lift stations. Now, is it full-blown odor control? No, but it is some odor mitigation strategy. The district does have plans for future odor control systems, but as you can see on the right, this is how a normal public water service operates. So at the bottom, the greatest, just like a food pyramid, you have functionality and regulatory compliance. Going up from there, you have operations and maintenance and then things like odor control at the very top. I've made this analogy a couple times and might not make too much sense, but it's kind of like if you own a home. If you own a home and you have $20,000 to dump into this home and you have a variety of options, how you could spend the $20,000. You could build a swimming pool, you could fix a leaking roof, you could fix a driveway, you could do any number of improvements. Building the swimming pool is nice, the district want, and we are kind of comparing odor control to the swimming pool. The odor control does not fall under functionality and regulatory compliance nor does it fall under O&amp;M, but if you have money, you fix the leaking roof first and then you can get the swimming pool. And getting the swimming pool is a goal of the district, obviously. Having odor control, a full-blown odor control or some sort of odor mitigation strategy is the plan, but for right now, regulatory compliance and O&amp;M are the primary goal, is the primary goal for, for this bond election.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. That's right. Same thing on the potable water side. Taste and odor fall right up there on the top. If you go through the TCEQ regs, you'll see that the mandates do not currently address taste and odor. The district again wants to implement future water treatment processes with either membranes or some sort of additional filtration to address taste and odor, but first and foremost, functionality and regulatory compliance, then operations and maintenance and then things like taste and odor.
So yeah, if there's anybody who wants to have questions, I mean, here, we are recording the meeting, so your question can be recorded if you're speaking in this mic and then, so I don't know if we want to just open it up to anyone who'd like to come up.
We've got a list here. Edna, I think she was first, so you have the floor, ma'am.
Yeah, please.
Sure.
No, it's probably better if you haven't recorded.
How long will it take for the debt to be paid off? I mean.
There, it's 20-year terms.
Okay, so we'll be charged that extra amount for 20 years?
Yes.
Okay. And, well, that's the one question. When you brought up the odor control, wouldn't it be, well, in public places like close to the community center, it would be nice not to, after you go to a meeting and then you're milling around and answering questions, you know, you hang around and you're smelling all that stuff. I mean, I can understand, it's not a priority, but in a public place, it would be nice not to. And this is, is not in regard to that, but the water pressure, it's really low. I mean, is that, is that a constant, is that going to be the pressure from now on? I mean, it seems to be.
I would say we're meeting the minimum departments, the state departments, is 35 PSI.
Okay.
But we're actually over that, but I'd say like 55 to 60 PSI. In other places, like, like, like. A lot of places, what I see that there are problems is probably the second floor or third floor of a home.
Okay.
That we're having the problems because the higher you go, the less pressure goes to the homes, right? Maybe that could be motivation, I don't know, if you're in Combi, then you're on the second floor or third floor.
Yeah.
That could be another, like for high razors and soft water, what we normally do is they install pressure pumps in the high razor. They can have equal pressure all the way to the top. So a lot of these areas encounter low pressure is in the second or third floor, and higher.
Okay, and just one other question, and this has nothing to do, but Homeland Security sent out a notice on Friday that the hackers were trying to get into our infrastructure, and do you guys, are you guys addressing that of any sort? Because I...
We do have an IT person that's here full-time, and his responsibility is maintaining firewalls and controls so no one breaches our network. So we do have a lot of security measures in place. Because we actually did have a ransomware incident about a year ago, and we've stepped up our cybersecurity since that incident. But we had a ransomware in April 2014. It was horrible.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, you have Maria.
Well, she asked all my questions, but I had one, but I had one more. Is it this one?
Yes, ma'am.
So I live alone. So every month I pay my bill, and I pay the minimum amount. So my bill for my indoor water is usually the same. It's $25 and change, and that's not going to change, according to this. So this will be like a special assessment?
Well, because since we are a municipal utility district, we do, there is a property tax assessed to the lenders. So this is an increase to that property tax that's assessed as one item on your annual statement.
But it's not the regular water bill?
Yeah, well, the water we bill has no impact with this thing.
Right, so the rates on the water will...
They're not affected by this.
Will stay the same, so it'll just be a different, another charge on my, on my bill.
Well, you have taxes every year, any taxes that you pay, that's where the assessment is for the...
Oh, so it's not going to be part of the water bill, it'll be part of the assessment?
That's correct.
Oh, okay. And according to this, if it's about a $200,000 home, that's about...
I can go back real quick.
I think I saw $80 or...
Yes, ma'am. So just to recap, if we do proceed with the Texas Water Development Board funding source, $200,000, for example, the annual impact would be $67.50, or $5.62 on a monthly basis.
Right, and that's your preferred, the TWCB, the funding source?
Well, it's the lowest, yes, ma'am, absolutely.
That's going to be the...
The low-range, the lower range.
Sure.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
So I noticed that quite a few of these improvements are for the island. And, you know, like the bill that I pay for water I don't use, because it's a minimum, it almost feels like this is another thing that I'm paying for that I'm not really, you know, making use of, except when I go to visit the island. So this is more for, you know, the businesses on the island, you know, that bring in all the tax dollars for us here in the county. So, you know, I understand the trade-off. But it does seem like maybe South Padre Island should be paying more of the, you know, investment for these improvements, since most of the improvements are going to be done on the island. Especially with...
Mostly what they can do, because they have bigger homes out there, rather than things to help the homes are or the businesses, mostly they do pay...
Yeah, you know, and again, you know, in theory, it sounds as though, you know, everybody's paying there for your share, but it does feel like, you know, since you're not in an ownership position, you're not really getting benefit of it, you know.
Just to recap that also... Yes, ma'am. So... Correct. Out of the seven projects that we have, projects four, five, six, and seven are all centered around two wastewater treatment plants. Those wastewater treatment plants just happen to be on South Padre Island and service, and service that area. The project three is a system-wide lift station rehabilitation, so that's entire district-wide. And then, of course, project two is a sludge holding tank at the Port Isabel wastewater treatment plant, happens to be in Port Isabel. And the sludge drying beds, that water treatment plant is on the outskirts of Laguna Vista, or is it within Laguna Vista technically?
It's both county, but basically Laguna Vista.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so does the one, you know, the improvements you're making to Isla Blanca, is that coming about because of the improvement, you know, the big improvements that the county's making, the big project they have going on to redo Isla Blanca Park?
No, they're doing something entirely separate. So this is just our own rehab needs to meet our discharge permit requirements.
Okay, I just wondered if this was to support that in any way?
No, basically, our existing capacity already has enough room for growth over the next 10 years. As far as really needing to do expansions at our sewer plants, based on projected growth, our first impact is going to be here in Port Isabel in around 2028, 2029. That's based on our, our population growth. So pretty much our existing, like as far as the rehab, is just to maintain that current permitted capacity where it's at, and continue to meet that over time.
Right. And just one other thing I'll say about the odor, because we had been talking about the odor. And I thought, well, you know, I wouldn't mind paying $16 million, but, you know, if that's going to take care of the odor, you know, at the community center and other places around town, you know, it might be worth it, I guess. But I hear you say it's more like, more like a, you know, a luxury item to have odor, an odor-free meeting space.
Well, that, what happens here is, so the district operates in providing a water wastewater service, and they've got a set of rules by which to abide by. And so what we're trying to do is, is get the district to the next 20, 30 years down the road while maintaining that compliance.
I've, I'll just stop you. I understood all that. But I'll just stop you. I've never lived in my 65 years, I've never lived in an area where I was walking and all of a sudden I smelled, you know, number two. I just, that's never happened to me. So I don't know. You know, I just came back to the valley about three or four years ago, and I lived in Virginia for many, many years. So like I say, to hear you say it's a luxury, it's like, I don't think so. I don't agree with you.
Yes, ma'am.
But I understand that you have to prioritize, you know, especially when you're spending public money, but, you know, like I said, to me, it's not really a luxury. It's something that...
Do you have a part you're working on right now that you are, and how many lift stations in the world?
Six.
Six right now, so moving forward...
How many do we have?
One nine. Yeah, we have...
Well, we are working on improving on that part, odor control. I know the lift station on the 19 up in, posted on Instagram, right in front of Instagram, as myself have experienced, that I've driven by there, and I see bicyclists with a mask on. How do you think I should, I call my employees, like, look, and this is why...
Something's, yeah.
Improve, improve that odor controller, same system that we have, do something about it.
Yeah.
In a ready place, all you need to do is maintain, make sure that it's going perfectly. And of course, they went out the right way, like, everything's okay here, everything's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm on, I'm on top of that, because there's one, my microode is here at the water district, and I did on the other one, the water pressure, and then another one, they had questions at South Padre Island, was taste and odor on the water side. We are, as long as I'm here, I want to be working on...
Working on that.
Doing better taste and odor in the water.
Yeah.
And I'm a doctor or engineer, and he says that we can do it. So we're planning to do something about the taste and odor in the water, water, on the water side.
Okay. And what I will say about my pressure, I live in a single, single-story home. And just about a year ago, my pressure changed, maybe about a year and a half ago. So when I first moved in, everything was great. And so about a year ago, my pressure, I just went down. So, and I had... No, I had you guys come and check to see if maybe it was from the, you know, from the...
Would you like to just come by and call us and just give us raptors?
Yeah, because I don't think there's anything wrong, but, and like I said, I did have you come out and check the pressure from the, from the meter, and it is 40 PSI. So I, I guess the answer was, there's really nothing wrong from the meter, so it must be maybe the old pipes are old, or maybe, you know, it could be something, you know, unique to your property, not, not necessarily the water, the water district.
Let's just recommend that you need our, your raptors, so before you do that, you won't...
Okay. Okay. And I just have one more other comment, and this doesn't have to do with the proposal, but like I said before, I live alone, so I pay, and I'm sure there's more people in this situation, but I pay the minimum amount. You know, there's no incentive for me to save water, because I'm going to be paying that amount every month anyway. But I wondered if there's any way that, you know, the overage that I pay could be applied to some, somebody else's bill who's having trouble affording their water bill? I mean, I don't know if you have any kind of, you know, the water sharing, you know, community water sharing, you know, anything like that?
Can the owner of the property has the responsibility of making sure that they conserve the water?
Yeah, but, but I feel like the portion that I don't use, that I pay for, that could credit somebody else who's struggling to, you know, pay their water bill, you know? So it was just a suggestion, if you don't have that. But, you know, I don't know. And also, I guess there's people who own homes, you know, who rent them, who, you know, don't live in them. And then when they sit empty, they still, they don't turn the water off, they're still paying the water bill, but they're not using water, you know? So it's that kind of thing that might be helpful for, you know, the community, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next, you have Dennis Stoll.
Hi, guys. I'm Dennis Stoll, Mayor Pro Tem of South Padre Island. Thanks for coming over to the island and making this presentation, but this presentation has more detail that we talked a little bit about. I just wanted a little bit of clarity. First thing is, in addressing what the island pays for, is the LMWD the same kind of as the Point Isabel School District? Does it serve the same area?
It may serve as the same area, but not the same as...
Yeah, our boundaries are completely separate.
Okay. Because that's one tax bill that I'm very familiar with. To answer questions about what South Padre Island pays, for the Point Isabel School District, we pay over 90% of the taxes. And I would assume for LMWD, we're going to be probably paying nine out of every $10, or very close to that. So perhaps in answer to that, that may help you just, just a little bit. Just a little bit, on the, how's this bond going to be rated? Do you know what your, have you gotten a preliminary number on that?
Yeah, I mean, our ratings are, I mean, we have the rating, if we go through Texas Water Development Board...
And it's 20 years? Okay? And I want to... Water rates at this point to the end users, but we are raising the...
That would be our, that the presenting is of projects.
All right. So just from my own understanding, I got off of there, we're going to go 10436, 107735, which I'm like, what calculations on my phone is? It's an 84% increase in taxes. And that is correct? Okay. So this deferred maintenance is beginning to come back a little bit and bite us. You know, just as a city official, we're in the 30 cent range, we raise, we're... I'm just doing, doing the math in my head on South Padre Island. If I got this big of tax raise, I could do an awful, awful lot. But the fact of the matter is, tonight we're here, and I sense that you're very similar to where we were on South Padre Island recently. And where we were at that time was, is we had not done an adequate asset life evaluation. And in that, what we tried to do, and it would be my recommendation to y'all to take to your board, just to work on this, you may have other impaired assets that you don't know. So I'll just spill our dirty laundry to help you better understand what is going on. We looked at roofs, we looked at parking lots, we looked at HVAC. HVAC on our city hall, we had two air handlers up there. Basically, if you rubbed your thumb across, all the coils were coming off of. We had fire equipment that needed repair, and police cars that were prepared to service our fires with that. And it took a little bit of courage. Once you made the presentation to us, I was asking about the life thing, and I appreciate what you've added to that. But it, it's probably not going to be real cheap. I don't know how much it's going to cost on a big water district, but you may do it in bits and pieces. But you may want to do an asset life evaluation, and then look toward what your goals are. I understand that that odor control is important, but as a city official, I'm the guy that gets the call when the winds blow the roof. And there, we have, you know, 700 guests in Isla Gram, Isla Gram. And that affects us a lot there on the island. We're just hoping that southeast breeze kind of carries it the, the other way, but sometimes it doesn't. So in this asset life evaluation, we used a gentleman by the name Homer Sampson of Victoria. And I'm not sure that he, he could do all this without them. What I would really want to see is, you know, what you're going to have. We were looking at this, let me say it this way. We were looking at this, we knew eventually we were going to have to pay. It's either, you know, maybe in any way. We had this that goes on, and we had what we call deferred maintenance. And I think really what I'm, what I'm sensing here is, you have deferred maintenance, so what you're, that is an 80% increase in taxes. And got it, but we still need good water, so we're going to have to pay one way or another. And when you do the asset life evaluation, if you look at quality of water and everything else, what you want, you know, sometimes what you want this to be cool, but you can even, you got to figure the roof. But as you do this asset life evaluation, and what you have, it's going to be within our base around 20, 21, 22. It's close, but we're, we're many years out, so we know that we've got to repave this parking lot this year, we've got to re-roof city hall this year, we've got new HVAC systems on the convention center this year. And it's very, very similar or analogous to what you're facing. Sometimes it's really true, and it's painful, and we had to raise taxes one penny to cover that and do that. But I think it's better that we do that instead of having the air conditioners fall off the roof, or, you know, inadequate fire and police protection. So that would be my... I know it's not a lot of fun whenever you're going back to 2012 studies. Got it, understand it. And sometimes it's not a lot of fun, but I think we really need to just face reality. Thanks so much for your time today, I appreciate it.
All right. I don't have anybody else on the list. Does anybody want to add their name to the list? Does anybody want to add their name to the list and come up and ask any other questions?
What they need to be, red light.
All right. Because they need to be addressed. One thing they didn't address, it really is, it boils down to, you do it now, and you do it through a bond issuance that's paid with taxes, or the district will be forced to still have to do it in the ways the water and sewer rates. It's not, it's not a matter of doing the project or not doing the project, basically it's a matter of how you're going to pay for it. The TCEQ is mandating a lot of these projects have to be done, and they have to be done. So it will be up to the voters, do they want to see a rate increase in their taxes or in their water and sewer monthly bills.
Did you do a calculation, how it would be if you did an increase in the water rates versus, you know, the increase in taxes?
And now we're going to put this into the rates, and we are studying, and so we had us kind of...
Right.
So rates are based on, you know,...
So we did, well, and I guess, could you give me an idea of what that would be? Could you figure, would my water bill double, you know, to pay for this, for this maintenance here, or, you know, an idea of what it would be?
Well, the problem is, because the revenue would be the alternative to the taxes, and I don't know where our cost benefits, we need to make a certain bit of appreciation. If I can, revenue is, I would really think that, man, we'd have to go to our economists and...
Okay, so, so you didn't figure that out?
No, we didn't.
Okay. And the, because folks might be more willing to, you know, pay a higher rate than, you know, what you're... How can I pay...
And it's totally... And since we appreciate that, and we see water, and actually, I think, well, it's for...
Oh, I'm staying corrected.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.